Good evening and welcome to Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, August 24. If you're watching live on Monday, August 24, we encourage you to call in if you have any comments or questions. Our call-in number is 769-1677. My virtue of Labor Day holidays and the Jewish holidays, our next regular meeting is not until Monday, September 21 at 8:00 p.m. with a work session at 7:00. If you're watching live on Verizon or Cablevision Cable TV, you can also pick us up at PCTV76.org in a live webcast, or within a couple of days, an on-demand video of the meeting bookmarked by subject. I had a few announcements to make. The first, I think many of you may have already heard about. Earlier this week, we had a notification from the Westchester County Health Department that a skunk that had been captured up near Willis Place, that's near the aqueduct off Leland Avenue, was tested positive for rabies. So, we just wanted to make that known to the community. If you should see any animals that raise any concern at all, please call the police at 769-1500. And in a case of an emergency response, always call 911. But there is a lot of information about rabies and about animals with rabies, and how you can protect not only yourself and your family, but also your pets, at the Westchester Health Department website. So, click into the westchestergov.com website, into the Health Department, and you'll find information about rabies. So, there's been no indication that there's an epidemic of it, but a rabbit skunk was found up near Willis Place, and it's worth everybody being aware of it and having it in their mind. Two other things I wanted to remind everybody about. We're coming into the storm season. Another pitch, if you haven't already signed up, to go to pleasantville-ny.gov, and on the left-hand column, click into Code Red. That's a subscription service we have hired to create an emergency database. We will only use it for emergencies, but it gives us multiple ways to reach you. You can enter landline phones, cell phones, emails, numbers you want to be used to text you, possibly an alternate phone number if you imagine that, for example, power is out in Pleasantville, you might go elsewhere. Please sign on at Code Red. That's the only way we can reach you if we're in a circumstance where we need to get information out to the public and don't have the usual communication tools. Also got a reminder from Metro North, as well as from Con Edison, both of which have storm emergency information. If you're interested, you can go to mta.info/mnr, and both see updates about service, and also sign up to get text messages. You can get similar status reports through the Metro North app. And Con Edison has a similar set of options if you go to coned.com under Customer Central. A few steps down is the Category Storm Central. That is the place to go if you are reporting an outage, and also the place to go to see the status of outages in Pleasantville and beyond. So, hopefully, we will have no use for any of these services, but it will help a lot if everybody has lined them up in advance. So, again, pleasantville-ny.gov. Sign up for Code Red. I was pleased and amused to report that Sundance Deli here on Wheeler Avenue was listed last week by Yelp as one of the 10 best restaurants in Westchester, in the good company of a bunch of delis in other communities not to be mentioned, and also Blue Hill at Stone Barns. So, that reflects—
There are no other communities.
—obviously, a mix of different kinds of food purveyors, but the folks at Sundance ought to be proud that the Yelp reports have them in the top 10. So, that was very good news. Wanted to remind everybody that many kinds of home improvements, including new siding, new roofs, new driveways and the like, require building permits. I think we'll have more to say about that in the course of the fall, but we've had a number of circumstances recently where homeowners have either not realized or failed to get a building permit for something that requires a building permit. It's a system that is both a legal requirement and a requirement to maintain safety in the community. So, if you have any question at all about whether what you're undertaking at your house is a matter that requires a building permit, please contact Robert Hughes, the Building Inspector, and find out. Lastly, I wanted to mention that, as I think I did the last time, we had a work session two weeks ago, and will be continuing to have work sessions over the next month or two, to scope out a master plan update. Our current village comprehensive plan, as it's called, which is a legal requirement, was created in 1995. A piece of it relating to Marble Avenue was updated in 2007, but it is a document that, at this point, is pretty long in the tooth. A lot of changes have occurred, not only in the community, but in the commercial environment and in the demand for different kinds of housing. So, we're, as a group, beginning the process of trying to scope out how big a project we want to undertake to update this, what sections ought to be updated, whether it's parts or all, and what method for community engagement would be the most logical. So, keep your eye on that subject. And if it's a subject of particular interest to you, please reach out to any of us, or to Patty Dwyer. You can find my email, as well as Village staff, on the website at pleasantville-ny.gov. Would be happy to know of community members who have a specific interest in this and might want to play a role in it as it devolves. Anybody else have a report?
I just wanted to make everybody aware that Lou McKinney, who we reported on, one of our great veterans that passed away, his memorial service is Saturday, I believe. Do you have— that's not September. Is it September? No.
No.
Saturday is the 29th.
August 29.
Thank you. And I think it's at 10:30—I don't know why it's— oh, here it is. At the Presbyterian Church. 11:00 a.m. at the Presbyterian Church. It would be a great thing if anybody could show up. Lou was a veteran of World War II, and had some great stories, as well as, if you read his obituary, he was in the— served with MacArthur in the—
In the Philippines.
—in the Philippines. And he was part of—
Yeah, real deal guy.
—on the Outer Islands in Japan, and waiting before Hiroshima, so.
And was a speaker at Memorial Day not too many years ago, reporting on all of that, so.
11 o'clock Presbyterian Church this Saturday, if you're around. Great.
All right. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to expand on, Mayor, what you said about the master plan for—I think it bears mentioning that the master plan is, although it's a legal requirement, it's something that's going to guide zoning in the future, zoning for our commercial areas. It can guide zoning for different areas of the village. But, you know, we're hoping in the next— at least I am in the next several years, to develop some new zoning concepts that might encourage, you know, the types of development that we want. And I think it's important to get the community involved in the master plan overhaul, to help us develop our real vision for the future in terms of zoning. So, I just wanted to, you know, mention that it's important to the village for the future growth, development of the village. Something that's important to us, and, you know, I really do hope it's important to, you know, people in the community. So, anybody who's interested, come on out as a mayor said.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Further announcements? All right. With that, let's go to our regular agenda. We also have a few additional resolutions related to block parties that came in late and are added to the agenda that were not on what was posted originally. Steve, number 147.
Now, should I go ahead and just read this whole thing? I mean, it isn't—it isn't—
Do you want to explain how things have changed?
Yeah, I will. So, why don't you—
—of the public ears.
—why don't you sort of summarize and indicate the balances in the record?
I think it should be read into the record.
You want to read the whole thing?
I'll help you read it if you want.
No, I can read it.
All right, go for it.
I think it should as well.
All right, good. That's fair. No problem.
All right, so, "Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves a local law to add a section to the village code entitled 'Community Choice Aggregation Energy Program' as follows. Add Section 1. The code is hereby amended by adding a new chapter entitled 'Community Choice Aggregation Energy Program' as follows. Article 1. Legislative findings, intended purpose, and authority. It is the purpose of this local law to seek to reduce the cost of natural gas and electricity to its residents. The purpose of this CCA program, as described to the Village of Pleasantville by Sustainable Westchester, is to allow participating local governments, including the Village of Pleasantville, to procure energy supply service for their residential and small commercial customers, who will have the opportunity to opt out of the procurement while maintaining transmission and distribution service from the existing distribution utility. This chapter establishes a program that will allow the Village of Pleasantville, or its designated agent for that purpose, to put out for bid the total amount of natural gas and/or electricity being purchased by local residential and small commercial customers. Bundled customers will have the opportunity to have more negotiating strength and consequential potential to lower—that's a little consequential-y, I guess, right? Potential to lower their overall energy costs, and to improve customer choice and value by providing an additional alternative source of electricity and natural gas, thereby fulfilling the purposes of this chapter and fulfilling an important public purpose. The Village of Pleasantville is hereby authorized to participate in a Community Choice Aggregation Energy Program pursuant to Section 10, IAA-12 of the New York Municipal Home Rule Law, and State of New York Public Service Commission Case Number 14-M0564, Petition of Sustainable Westchester for Expedited Approval of the Implementation of a Pilot Community Choice Aggregation Program within the County of Westchester. Order granting petition in part issued February 26, 2015, as may be amended, including subsequent orders of the Public Service Commission issued in conjunction with or related to Case Number 14-M0564. Collectively, the name of the rest of this will be called the order. Order shall also mean orders of the Public Service Commission related to the State of New York Public Service Commission Case Number 14-M0224, proceeding on motion of the Commission to enable Community Choice Aggregation Programs issued December 15. I think there's a typo there, 2014?
Yep.
"To the extent that orders related to Case Number 14-M0224 enable actions by the Village of Pleasantville not otherwise permitted pursuant to orders related to this case 14-M0564, provided, however, that in the event of any conflict between those two cases"—I'll need to read them all again—"orders from Case 14-M0564 shall govern the CCA program. This chapter shall be known and may be cited as the Community Choice Aggregation Energy Program Law of the Village of Pleasantville." So, then I'm just going to quickly summarize the definitions. Is that all right with everybody?
Sure.
Okay. "So, for the purposes of this chapter, and unless it's otherwise expressly stated, or unless the context otherwise requires, the terms of this chapter shall have the meanings employed in the State of New York Public Service Commission's Uniform Business Practices, or if not so defined there, as indicated below. So, bundled customers will mean residential and small commercial customers of electricity or natural gas who are purchasing fuel from the distribution utility. Small commercial will be non-residential customers as permitted by the order. Community aggregation—you know, Community Choice Aggregation, CCA, is essentially a municipal energy procurement program. Distribution utility is the owner or controller of the means of distribution of the natural gas or electricity regulated by the PSC. Public Service Commission, or the PSC, is referring to the New York State Public Service Commission. Suppliers are referring to energy service companies, or ESCOs. Everyone's heard us talk a lot about ESCOs. That's what that means. These are suppliers, people who procure electric power and natural gas for bundled customers in connection with this chapter, or alternatively, generate as electricity and natural gas. And Sustainable Westchester is a not-for-profit organization comprised of member municipalities in Westchester County. I think—how many now are there? How many are there?
Forty.
Forty communities now in Westchester that are part of Sustainable Westchester. Okay, so, establishment of a Community Choice Aggregation Energy Program. A Community Choice Aggregation Energy Program is hereby established by the Village of Pleasantville, whereby the Village of Pleasantville shall cooperate with Sustainable Westchester by participating in the CCA program to the full extent permitted by the order, as set forth more fully herein. The Village of Pleasantville's role under the CCA program involves the aggregating of the electric and/or natural gas supply for its residents, and the entering into a contract with one or more suppliers through Sustainable Westchester for the procurement of electricity and natural gas for its residents, which the residents may accept or opt out of. Under the CCA program, the operation and ownership of the utility service shall remain with the distribution utility, which in our case, is ConEd, right?
Yes.
"The Village of Pleasantville's procurement of energy supply through a CCA program constitutes neither the purchase of a public utility system, or the furnishing of a utility service. The Village of Pleasantville will not take over any part of the electric or gas transmission or distribution system, and will not furnish any type of utility service, but will instead negotiate with suppliers through Sustainable Westchester on behalf of participating residential and small commercial customers. In order to implement the CCA program, the Village of Pleasantville may adopt one or more resolutions that outline the process of and conditions for participation in the CCA program, including but not limited to signing a contract for a compliant bid with one or more suppliers, all as consistent with the local law in the order. The PSC supervises retail markets and participants in these markets through legislative and regulatory authority and the Uniform Business Practices, which includes rules relating to the eligibility of participating ESCOs, the operation by which ESCOs provide energy services, and the terms on which customers may be enrolled with ESCOs." So, now I'm going to read briefly procedures for eligibility and information about customer data sharing. "As permitted by the order, the Village of Pleasantville may request the distribution utility's aggregated customer information of all bundled customers in the Village of Pleasantville not currently enrolled in an ESCO by fuel type and service classification on a rolling basis. Sustainable Westchester, on behalf of the Village of Pleasantville, shall issue one or more requests for proposals to suppliers to provide energy to the participants, and may then award a contract in accordance with the CCA program. All contracts will stipulate that the contracted supplier agrees to collect the utility gross receipts tax for all customers, regardless of utility territory." Just want to mention that that is a significant difference to the prior program. Mayor Scherer will talk about that briefly, but to the prior law that we did have on the agenda, that is the thing that held us up last time. So, that's now been included. "Sustainable Westchester, or the Village of Pleasantville—if the Village of Pleasantville so chooses—will then request that individual customer data, including usage, capacity tag, obligations, account numbers, and service addresses, will be provided by the distribution utility to Sustainable Westchester and/or the contracted supplier in accordance with the CCA program. Sustainable Westchester, the contracted supplier, the Village of Pleasantville, and the Village of Pleasantville, will protect customer information as required by law, subject to the order and the limitations of the New York State Freedom of Information Law." So, now this section is about the choice of the energy supplier, opt-out notices, and so on. "Sustainable Westchester and/or the Village of Pleasantville, in conjunction with the selected ESCO, will notify its bundled residential and small commercial customers by letter notice of the Village of Pleasantville's decision to establish the CCA program, of the contract terms of an ESCO, and of the opportunity to opt out of the CCA program. The letter notice will be sent to each customer at the address provided by the distribution utility, and explain the CCA program and the material provisions of the ESCO contract, identify the methods by which the customer can opt out of the CCA program, and provide information on how the customer can access additional information about the CCA program. The initial opt-out period shall be 20 days after the notification is sent to the customer." The CCA—sorry, CCA bundled—CCA program bundled customers, upon enrollment, will receive a welcome letter that will explain the customer's options for canceling the enrollment if they believe they were enrolled incorrectly, or otherwise decide to withdraw from the CCA program in favor of another supplier. The welcome letter also will explain that residential customers are entitled to the added protection of the mandated three business day—or is it three-day or three-business day? Three-business day, isn't it?
Three-day.
Okay. "Three-day rescission period, as detailed in Section 5B3 of the Uniform Business Practices. It will also explain that residential customers may opt out of the CCA program at any time, without fee or penalty, by selecting the distribution utility or another ESCO as their energy supplier, and providing the process for doing so. Verification and reporting consists of—Sustainable Westchester shall be responsible for filing an annual report with the PSC, which identifies the number of customers enrolled in the CCA program by municipality and customer class, the number of customers who return to utility service or service with another supplier during the reporting period, and the average cost of commodity supply by month for the reporting period. This local law shall take effect upon filing with the Secretary of State."
Is there a second?
Second.
So, thank you for that. Have a drink. Have a drink of water. I think those of you who follow our activities have heard a lot about this Community Choice Aggregation program. We have had extended discussions about it, both in public sessions and in work sessions. And on April 13, we're visited by Mike Gordon of Sustainable Westchester, who happens to be here in the audience tonight, who gave an extended hour-long presentation that was also put up on the web on PCTV. And we have worked our way through various changes. A very similar local law to the one Steve just read was the subject of a public hearing that was held on July 13, which we opened and closed. On that occasion, July 13, this matter was on for resolution to vote, but we elected not to vote that night because a question had arisen about the gross receipts tax, and whether some ESCOs, alternative energy suppliers, were taking the position elsewhere in New York State, that customers of an ESCO were not—that ESCOs were not responsible, or that distributing utility was not responsible for collecting the gross receipts tax. That has been vetted by the folks at Sustainable Westchester in the intervening weeks, and is also a subject of concern for NICO, the New York Conference of Mayors. But, all of that has led to two pieces of information, and one is that it is an issue that has arisen elsewhere in New York State, but not in our territory thus far. And also, that Sustainable Westchester, in order to make certain that this would not have a negative effect on communities that participate, intends to require as a term in their request for proposal, that any responding suppliers would commit to collecting the gross receipts tax. So, we have added a single line, the one that Steve made reference to, about that requirement for the gross receipts tax to be collected in the local law. And then the other difference between the local law that Steve read and the one that we had a public hearing on on July 13, is that we have clarified some editorial changes in Sections 4 and 5, the procedures for eligibility and the opt-out notice, changing in no way the intent of the language, but simply avoiding some repetition and making it a little bit clearer. So, we've run all of this by our village council, both the law itself, as well as the process for engaging Community Choice Aggregation, as well as these changes we've made in the local law. And they have given their blessing to this. So, that brings us tonight to the vote on this enabling legislation, which does not commit us to a specific contract, but enables us to participate when Sustainable Westchester gets a contract back. So, for those of you who haven't listened to all of this and are interested, I turn your attention to the presentation Mike Gordon made on April 13. If you click into PCTV76.org and take a look at the board meeting of April 13, that is really your best introduction to the whole process, if you haven't heard of it before. If you care to, feel free to do that. If that's not up your alley, let me remind everybody of three things. One is, the only people who would be affected by this are people who continue to buy their energy from ConEd. All of us buy the distribution of the energy from ConEd, and all of us have service through ConEd. None of that has changed. The only piece of it that would change potentially is that the supplier of the energy itself, the electricity and the gas, would be an alternative energy supplier distributed by Con Edison. So, if you fall into that category, having not signed on with an alternative energy supplier at this point in time, you would be included in the pool of people presented to the market as an aggregate customer base, to try to get a good price based on the power of all of us together, representing a big buying group. If that comes back with a favorable result, that is a result that is less than ConEd is currently charging, Sustainable Westchester comes back to us, assuming we agree to participate. Any of you who would be included in that group would receive a letter, as you just heard, giving you 20 days to opt out if you don't want to be in it at all. And then thereafter, a welcome letter explaining the new program, and you are free to opt out at any point thereafter without any penalty whatsoever. So, this is a program that has existed in quite a few other states. In fact, the state of Illinois, I'm confident in saying, I think a majority of the residents of the state of Illinois purchase their energy through Community Choice Aggregation. From my own standpoint, I'm happy to report that I think that it not only makes a lot of sense, it unleashes the forces of capitalism and the free market in the purchase of energy. It takes advantage of the buying power we have collectively, though none of us have individually. And amid the many stories all of us have heard about the troubles individuals have had assigning on with an ESCO, it provides the missing piece that hasn't been available to individual residents, and that is the overlay of professionals who know what they're doing, cutting a good deal, managing the relationship with an ESCO, and making sure that it's a fair and favorable deal. So, other comments?
Well, I'm sure the state of Illinois thanks you, because no one ever looks to them for any type of positive, especially, policy. But, of course, my comments are on the record that I am not for any type of opt-out, and that's the main reason. I'm all for saving people money. But, I don't agree with it being an opt-out. If it's such a great program, it should be opt-in. I also am very uncomfortable with the process that this has gone through. We closed a public hearing. I was under the impression we'd be able to talk about the changes I recommended, which I'm very happy to see that some of them are reflected in here. But, the gross utility tax was not discussed until you just explained to us now. Is that an assurance enough for me that, you know, we're going to be protected by this? I don't know. I don't know how I feel about that. But, I still will say that we are committing the village to a number of deliverables here, that I'm hoping that we can deliver. And I have some more questions for you, Mr. Gordon. I'm very glad that you're here. And—because I'm obviously in the minority, so I know I'll be outvoted, but I still have questions. Doesn't mean I can't not do my job. And I'm sure I can ask—I don't know if you want me to ask them to you now, but—
Sure, come on up. This is—
Is that all right?
Yeah, absolutely. Mike Gordon from Sustainable Westchester.
Um—
This is the fellow I made reference to on the April 13 meeting, so.
Mm-hmm. When you were last here, you talked about maybe you were setting—going to set up a website for each of the municipalities, that if it all happens, that you can do some reporting on there?
Yes.
Have you gotten any further with that?
Yeah, we just put out the RFP for that website on Friday.
Okay, so, that website would be a central website that all communities could go into?
No, the intent is that it'll be individual—central website, but then individual by community.
Okay. And would we have to—would that be—would there be a service charge for us for that?
No.
That would just be supplied?
No.
That's wonderful. So, that would probably coincide with, you know—
We're hopeful that it will coincide with the onset, but it's—you know, I don't want to promise anything that we cannot absolutely with assurance do.
Right. No, I'm just glad that you're working on it, because you had said that you were going to.
Yep.
And over the last couple of months, we weren't quite sure if that was happening. The other thing is, and as I said, some things were clarified in our revision here. Unfortunately, I didn't have as much time to review it as I would have liked. But, one of the things I did point out was, the opt-out period shall be 20 days after notification is sent to the customer. So, is that 20 days from the postmark? 20 days when they receive it? I don't—
The way we're going to operate it is that we're going to assume that it takes five days from the mailing to receive it, then there's the 20 days, then there's the rescission period. We're doing it conservatively, even though the—you know, technically, we could do it more aggressively, but we're doing it more conservatively.
So, you're going to assume it takes five days to get there? A lot of confidence in our United States postal system there. You'll probably email it and get it there faster. But, so, five days to mail it, and then 20 days from that point of receipt?
Yes.
Okay, so, you're giving yourself a little bit of a flex?
Yeah. Yeah, a little wick-a-rum.
Okay, so—
More like, we're giving the residents a little wick-a-rum.
Yes, thank you.
And they can opt out after that.
Yes.
Just make sure—
Yeah, there's no penalty.
—the curtain that falls after 20 days.
Right.
It removes their inclusion in the ballot.
Yep.
And then, the clarity—I know, as I said, I'm glad we cleaned this up a little bit, but this still says, "Sustainable Westchester and/or the Village of Pleasantville." Do you—how do you see that, like, with sending out these notices to customers and—
We're seeing it as a joint notice, because if it were to come from Sustainable Westchester, I think the people don't even know us.
They need not open it.
Okay. If it comes from...
They will at some point because you build more and more programs.
I think so. And so the idea is that people need to understand that it is being managed, in essence, by Sustainable Westchester, but they also need the gravitas of the...
Village.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then my last question would be, I do have a lot of concerns still about the information that is being given out here once we sign or this board approves an RFP from an ESCO. And the information that's given from the utility is substantial, that we're now saying that we're going to do whatever we can, and you are too, to protect that information. We're protecting it from FOIL or what are, or can we protect it?
Well, can I respond to that? And that is, the expectation is that the Village of Pleasantville would actually never have the information. We don't have any need for it, and it would go directly from ConEdison to either the contracted supplier and/or to Sustainable Westchester. You can comment on that.
Well, we won't have, so we won't have two pieces of information in the same place, meaning that the village already knows the resident's name and addresses. And so the first piece of information is just aggregated information, and there's no individual information.
Right.
But when we then get that individual information with the account numbers, the individual information is just going to be names and addresses. That's all it is. On that, that'll allow us to do that mailing. So we won't have any of the consumption numbers in that individual, in that mailing. The ESCO itself, which has insurance for any loss of information, the ESCO itself will then have the meter numbers and will therefore have the individual numbers for those.
Or the usage numbers, the capacity numbers, the capacity tax and everything like that.
Yeah.
So you're saying that Sustainable Westchester will only have names and addresses?
Yeah, and we're gonna, we're gonna get that and then not retain it because all we need it for is the mailing, and then we do not want to retain it.
Okay, so the, whatever ESCO this is, you know, and they will have protection of this data the way ConEdison would have protected this?
Yeah, and the way any quote-unquote "free market" ESCO is required to protect their information.
And ConEdison will still have it too because they are the billing agency, well, the servicing agency.
Yep.
Okay, so for the fact that we don't have it, we're protected from FOIL on that? Because it's not business to us?
Correct.
All right, I think that was the last of my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Much appreciated. Thanks, Mindy. Back down. Any other? Any further comments or questions?
So, you know, the way I see this law is a resident already has the choice of receiving their gas and/or electricity from ConEd as a supplier, or to buy it from an ESCO, or two different ESCOs, one for electricity, one for gas, whatever they want to do. And there are a number of ESCOs throughout New York State selling this. And to me, from my understanding, is it Sustainable Westchester, if they come, if they get an appropriate response to the RFP, if they get an appropriate proposal, will contract with one of those ESCOs. So we're really just positioning people to be able to get their gas supply from an ESCO at a better price. And we participate only if it really is a better price, and we have the assurance of Sustainable Westchester that they're only going to retain proposals that are at a substantially better price than what ConEd is doing. So to me, it seems as though we're just positioning people to buy their gas and electricity from the same ESCOs that they already can buy from, but at a better price. And if they choose not to, they like ConEd, they just want to deal with ConEd, that's perfectly fine, it's an easy out. And I do agree with Mindy that opting in, conceptually is, I like that idea better. However, I don't, I don't see that as being a realistic way of creating this program and providing to all those residents who would like to get a better price, providing that option. And since it's an easy, I think, easy opt-out, and opt-out at any time, that's why I fall in favor of this law. I do appreciate the changes that were made. The original proposal included a great deal of, you know, sort of policy statements about not only energy consumption, but, you know, green, green marketing and green development and things like that. And we took all that out because, you know what? To me, this law is really about just trying to save our residents some money, and that's why, you know, I did some editing, and we all agreed on the language that's there now. And then Mindy has good suggestions for some other edits, and we did that, none of which, I think, makes this a worse law. I think it all makes it a better law than what was originally proposed. So for those reasons, I support the law.
All right, any further comments? All right, since this has been the so-called discussion, let's, let's have a roll call vote. Steve?
Aye.
Mindy?
Aye.
Aye. So it passes three to one, and I want to remind everyone that the fact that we have passed, oh, let me also say, Colleen Wagner, who is not able to be here tonight, wanted everyone to know that she supports this and would have voted yes had she been here. I want to remind everybody that nothing is changing right now because we have passed this resolution. What happens next is that Sustainable Westchester will take all the communities that have elected to participate, go out to market, come back with an RFP. There are quite a few more steps before any of you who might be affected will be affected. So you won't be hearing anything for a while until that process makes its way down the road. And when we do have information from Sustainable Westchester, that's when you'll get a letter that will describe exactly what's in play. So let me just say, speaking for myself, I think this is a good program. I strongly support it. I share everybody's wish that it could be opt-in instead of opt-out, but I think the statistics from other states and in other industries is crystal clear that it is extremely difficult to get enough people to pay attention to the issue to make a choice. And the good news here is that I think it's a program that will benefit all of us. If you don't like it, you'll opt out, and you can do so at any time, at the price of a single phone call or returning a postpaid card. But speaking personally, I would encourage anyone who thinks they will be inclined to opt out to wait until they receive the letter from us and from Sustainable Westchester that tells you who has been engaged and what the terms of the deal are, and at that point you can make a decision. And if you, for all of those of you who end up participating and don't opt out, as Mike already mentioned, there'll be a website where, unlike the circumstance an individual resident has with an ESCO, you can log in and actually see what you paid as compared to what you would have paid if you had remained with the incumbent utility, ConEdison. And lastly, let me remind everybody of what has been discussed quite a number of times in this setting, that this pilot program, which was permitted by a ruling of the Public Service Commission in Albany, is in essence a pilot program, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys, where Westchester County, through the good offices of Sustainable Westchester, will be piloting this program, which may very well be rolled out by the PSC throughout the state of New York. So I, for one, am happy to have Pleasantville, New York, in the leading group led by the folks at Sustainable Westchester. So, thank you.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
How responsive do you think the ESCOs will be to the drop in oil prices? Are they absolutely...
Come on back. We won't be able to hear you unless you're...
Yeah, I know, I should have probably asked this question.
Now, it's okay.
It's really not relevant to the resolution itself, but watching this very closely, oil's really gotten creamed. How responsive are they versus ConEd?
The, roughly equal.
Really?
Yeah.
But do you think that the request for the RFPs now will result in even greater savings, given what's happened?
Yeah, it's a perfect timing. And one of the things that we're hopeful is that we'll get a fixed price, and then we'll be able to fix that for three years, which ConEd can't do legally.
Right, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Glenn. Thank you all. Mindy, 148.
Resolved pre-check register dated August 24, 2015, covering pre-check numbers 81337 through 81454, has been reviewed and they are hereby approved as listed below. The general fund, $161,063.53. The water fund, $133,926.03. Refuge fund, $12,783.03. Pool fund, $11,233.67. Trust and agency fund, $3,203, for a total of $391,609.67.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the check register? It's big this time.
Yes, it's big. Well, we have...
That's the come.
Yeah, we watch my card.
What is it?
We had the FASME, we had our...
Yeah, it's the contractual services.
Right. All right, all in favor of the check register? I motion approve, 149, Joe.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, August 10, 2015, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, corrections on the minutes?
Good job on those, Judy. Got a lot in there.
Yeah. Just looking at those minutes reminds me of the announcement we made about Legionnaires' disease. As you all know, there has been some outbreaks of Legionnaires' disease in the city, and Westchester County encourages everybody to pay special attention to keeping condenser units and cooling elements for air conditioners clean. And while you're at it, get rid of standing water, so. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Steve, 150.
I just did one.
He did one.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby sets the salary for court officers at $24 per hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
This is actually what it is. We had just had a previous resolution where we actually made a mistake, so we're just correcting a mistake.
That's good.
When we hired...
We budgeted it $24 an hour.
Right.
So that's in the budget?
Yes.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Mindy, 151.
Okay, so this is a SECP determination regarding a realignment of the portion of Grand Street, which I'm sure Patty will explain more to you. And the bottom, do you want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah, probably sure.
Okay, whereas the Board of Trustees has reviewed a short environmental assessment form, an EAF, prepared by Superintendent of Public Works Jeffrey Econom in conjunction with the realignment of a portion of Grand Street. And whereas pursuant to Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law as amended, known as the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECP, and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto to the Department of Environmental Conservation of the state of New York, being 6 NYCRR, Part 617, as amended, the Village of Pleasantville desires to comply with SECP and the regulations with respect to the project. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby determines that the realignment of a portion of the Grand Street constitutes a Type II action, which under SECP and the regulations, in particular 6 NYCRR, Section 617.5(c), Paragraph 2, will now have a significant effect, will not, sorry, ooh, boy, that's not, that's not Type II, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and that no further action under SECP is required.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe the project?
Yeah, well, it's a rather simple project. What we are looking to do is apply for a highway work permit with the state DOT that will enable us to realign a section of Grand Street that exists between the Sawmill River Parkway and Pleasant Avenue. Right now, if you know that area, there is a sharp bend in that small section of road that causes a lot of issues for alignment at that intersection. Just relocating this road a little further northeast will allow better site clearance. It'll also allow us, for the first time, to install a pedestrian sidewalk on that side.
That's the most important part.
And it's, it's a significant amenity for the community on that side of the highway. So we are trying to get this funded through the multimodal grant, as you know. If we do that, we think the whole thing will be covered through that state.
So according to the plans that I looked at in conjunction with this resolution, it looks like a couple of things that I thought were significant. Number one, there will be no additional impervious surfaces, so the existing roadway will be ripped up completely in grass.
That's correct.
And the new road will be roughly the same size. So there'll be no additional impervious surface, which impacts, I think, the environmental SECP review. So I was gratified to see that. It looks like we're planning that sidewalk, and it looks like we're also planning a pedestrian sidewalk as part of the bridge. Is that right? Am I wrong about that?
The bridge being just a small portion of roadway that...
Correct, but the bridge over the river...
That's correct.
Does not now have a pedestrian. Are we planning to create a walkway there for pedestrians?
Yes, we are.
That's where the walkway's going. There's currently...
No, but also, but it's also going to run along the road all the way to Pleasant Avenue. And I want to make sure, I'm happy to hear that we're actually planning a pedestrian walkway over the bridge, so you don't have to walk on the roadway in order to get to the sidewalk.
That is, the current situation requires people to walk on the paved roadway and then stow themselves behind that little bunker that the state had helped construct there, and they wait there to press the signal light to go across the street.
So dangerous.
This will be a walkway right to that area where you wait, you know.
Over the river will be an actual sidewalk and a place to stand and stop safely, to wait for the light to change in order to cross the...
All right, so what I'm confused about, I'm sorry, Joe, were you done?
I'm done, yeah. So I just wanted to comment on this.
I was confused, and this was my, it says here, construct a new 22-inch-wide road with asphalt curbing, and right over here on the right. I didn't know, what are the, what is that?
22-foot wide.
So that's the new road, and that's the old road?
Yes.
The dotted is the old, the existing road.
I didn't get that.
That's what's coming out.
Okay.
And I see a little black, a little black area that says, construction of new 5-foot-wide pedestrian sidewalk at the bridge.
What made it easier is that this, all of, the existing road and the newer, realigned road all exist on state right-of-way, which makes it a little easier for us.
Okay, thank you.
So I do, I do see here, though, that this is drawn on what appears to be a tax map. And I see lots 338 and 352, they look like we're going to be taking over a portion of those lots, but those are all part of that big green grass area there.
Yeah, we already, this is what was interesting, and it took some time to figure this out. We have use and occupancy permits from the state for that entire tract, everything from...
The state owns it, but we have use and occupancy.
So they're part, they're part of a tax map, but those tax lots are obviously state-owned.
They are.
So far, the state has not paid taxes.
Regardless, they're on the map, pointing at...
Hope springs eternal.
Aren't you surprised?
But, you know, so we're not, we're not impeding on, impeding on anybody's property?
No, no. And years ago, the village had asked the state for these right-of-way permits so we could use this property for green space, and we, basically, we do. It's all we use it for.
It'll be a little less green on the north, a little bit more green on the south.
Anyway, you can save that tree, that's on that quarter there? Probably not, right?
I don't think so, and I think we, you know, we have to work around that utility pole. There's an offensive pole right there in the existing street, you could see, so.
Well, can we, need not be part of this, but whatever trees have to come down, we should replace with new trees. That's part of our tree planting process.
Put one right in that, in that dotted area if we can.
Right.
No, it's a good program.
All right, any further comments?
Thank you, Patty.
All in favor? Aye. Motion approved, 152.
With pride, be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request for Roamer Avenue residents to hold the block party on Saturday, August 29.
I think you have to recuse yourself.
From 3:00 p.m.
Your daughter has signed this.
Yes, you have to recuse yourself.
I don't know, but he does not, he does not have a fiduciary involvement, so.
To be perfectly honest, I can't even pretend I have something else.
All right, well, then clearly you're all right. Is there a second?
Second.
We are hopeful that it will be a successful event even without Joe. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. And now we have two more that were added, 153, Steve.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Sarals Lane residents to hold a block party on Saturday, September 19th, ring date of September 20th, Page 4 to 11.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Grove Street residents to hold the block party on Saturday, September 19th, from 8 to 11 p.m.
It's a party day.
Is there a second? Thank you. Judy, we modified that headline. It's a Grove Lane, it's a Grove Street. I am interested to note Grove Street has historically been the...
A good party.
Been the, the kind of, the gold standard, hasn't it been, for block parties?
I think you need to put on extra people that...
All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. That's the last of our resolutions for the evening, this last meeting of August. Any further comment or new business? Any comments from the public?